Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Gleene.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall. Here. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the first order of business is a moment of silence. Tonight, if we stand in silence and thank the good Lord for what we've got, let's keep in mind a great lady that just passed away this week, a lady that was a friend of Florence who was here many, many times, and that's Governor Rose Moffer. So if you keep her in your prayers, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. The pledge of allegiance next. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Be seated. This is the first call to the public for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. This time, I have one request to speak, and that's Doug Stinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Doug Stinson. For any of you that don't know me, I'm currently the seating president of the Pinal County Mounted Posse out of Florence. Mainly want to come introduce myself and also tell you about some of the stuff that we've got going on. The sheriff's, or the, I'm sorry, the Mounted Posse has started a new activity using the rodeo grounds, and it's the third Saturday of every month. Our last, our first one was Saturday night. We're doing a jackpot barrel race and a Jim Kana for the kids. We didn't really advertise this one because we wanted to get the first one done and make sure there was no issues, but even with no advertising, we still had 17 barrel racers and 21 kids out to do the Jim Kana part. And the Jim Kana, for those not aware of it, for lack of a better term, is kind of a mini rodeo without livestock or obstacle course on horseback with no jumps. It's timed events. It's mainly so they can learn their horsemanship skills. The other thing, and I do have the flyers for that, and the town does have a couple, but if anybody would like one, feel free to get ahold of me. We'll get you whatever you need. We've also been working with the town officials to try to get the water system upgraded a little bit at the arena. We've had, one of the local businesses make a very generous donation of pretty much all the equipment and everything else to do it. We just got to work out the details with the town officials, so we're working on getting that done. And virtually that would just put some water storage at the facility, because at this point, there is absolutely none. The other thing is the Junior Prada is coming up. It's Thanksgiving weekend, so we're gonna, we're started selling ad, or looking for sponsorships and ads for the program. So we'll be coming around to the businesses and to anybody else that would like to sponsor an ad. It's anywhere from $25 up to 500 to sponsor a saddle. Again, I want to just thank you. I, that's all I have. I just wanted mainly to introduce myself. If you guys have any issues or anything comes up with the arena or anything that's going on, just please let me know, and we'll try to get anything taken care of.
Thank you, Doug. Now, you're gonna be talking to a member of the public, right?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a gentleman named Jerry Rabbert wrote a letter to the town council this last week. This letter was also published in our local paper, but I wanted to acknowledge on the record that he had written a letter, and that it's been provided to all the council members for their review.
He wanted it read into the record, but I think if we can put his letter in the record, that'll suffice. Is there any other member of the public that'd like to speak at this time? Say no movement. We're closed. Call to the public.
Item six, presentation. Item six A, presentation of Valerie Woolridge's 12 Years of Service Award received at the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Annual Conference.
Test. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we're gonna make a presentation that's already been presented to her at one meeting earlier in the month at the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. This is presented to Valerie Woolridge, who has spent 12 years of service to the town of Florence by being on the council. During Valerie's term on the council, she served as liaison to the council, the school district for the Florence schools. She's also said on the Native American tribal council that she is our liaison to them, and she also sitting on the library for many, many years. You've been on there all 12 years, I believe. She, now, she told me a little bit a while ago that there was one she did want me to mention. She's on the Coolidge Transportation Advisory Committee, what's that?
Coolidge Transportation Advisory Committee.
Okay, Coolidge Transportation Advisory Committee. But when we take transportation as right now, between Florence, Coolidge, and Apache Junction, we're all working together for the same thing, to make Florence a better, and their community, a better community. Takes a lot of time for a person to dedicate themselves to 12 years. It's not been fun all the time, but the dedication that people show to the council, the dedication that it takes to attend these many meetings and be responsible to the citizens of the community is great, and Valerie's done that. So Valerie, on behalf of our council, and theirs on League of Cities and Towns, which did, here's a service plaque for 12 years of service. And thank you very much, and I hope it goes another four after, well, you've got to come up for election in two years. Okay, so then you've got yours to take a look for for the 16. Let's give her a hand, ladies and gentlemen, Valerie Woolridge. Hey, Valerie. Now, I want to give Valerie. Now, wait a minute, wait a minute. We're gonna have you do something that you probably haven't done a lot of, but we're gonna have you do some public speaking and tell people what you think.
I speak when it's really important to say something. I'm not a person who talks to hear myself talking. When I have something to say, I say it, but I really appreciate the voters who keep voting me into office because I really enjoy what I'm doing, and I really enjoy being, helping Florence to be progressive because we are not in the old days anymore. We're moving up and trying to be current and be progressive, and I enjoy being a part of that. So I appreciate everybody who continues to support me, and I appreciate receiving this plaque from the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and the council.
Thank you.
Item seven, consent. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a member of council or a member of the public objects at the time the item is called. Item A, proclamation declaring October 2016 as Light Town Hall Purple for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Item B, approval of the Florence Football Booster Club Special Event Liquor License Application to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control for their Cow Pie Bingo Event to be held at Heritage Park on October 21, 2016. Item C, approval of the Santan United Sports Academy Special Event Liquor License Application to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control for the Anthem Celebrates the Arts Event at Anthem and Merrill Ranch Community on November 12, 2016. Item D, appointment of Tom Smith to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with a term to expire December 31, 2017. Item E, approval to enter into a lease agreement with Florence Mosaic Church Nazarene, owner of the Florence Fudge Shop for Suite 101 in the Silver King Marketplace. Item F, approval to enter into a lease agreement with Bucksford Style LLC for Suite 102 in the Silver King Marketplace. Item G, approval to enter into a lease agreement with Seconds Please on Main LLC for Suite 202 in the Silver King Marketplace. Item H, approval of the August 1st, August 15th, and August 22nd, 2016 council minutes. Item I, receive and file the following boarding commission minutes. One, the June 6th and June 14th Arts and Culture Commission Minutes. Two, the June 29th, 2016 Historic District Advisory Commission Minutes. Three, the June 15th, 2016 Library Advisory Board Minutes. Mayor, members of council, that is your consent agenda this evening.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off of the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to take off the Historic District Advisory Commission Minutes.
Anything else? Thank you. Then we need a motion? Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read with the exception of item D. Second. We have a motion in the second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item I, two.
I two.
I two, Bill.
What?
I two.
I two.
That's what you meant, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Item I two.
We have a motion in the second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item I two. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
The reason I pulled that item is because in the minutes from the Historic District, it doesn't reflect what the plaque is that was erected at the American Legion Historic, I mean, at the American Legion Historic Plaque was erected, but it wasn't specified what that plaque was for. And after calling and verifying what it was, I'm kind of disappointed that it wasn't clearly stated what the plaque was for because it was erected to recognize that that building was used as a school for black children in this town years ago. So it really should reflect in the minutes, in the minutes, that that's what that plaque was for. And it doesn't matter that the town didn't contribute money for the plaque. It's still part of this town's history. By simply stating that a plaque was erected at the Legion, we're failing to acknowledge a part of our community's history, honestly acknowledging it, acknowledging it. So like it or not, history is reality. Had it been related to anything else, any Western or historic time mix or any of those things, the name would have been mentioned in the minutes. So by ignoring this, we continue to contribute the climate that exists in our country. We have segregation in more areas than in schools. It's a part of this country's history, but until we decide to acknowledge that racism existed and still exists, and it existed in its raw form years ago, it's a little better, but it still exists, and we need to acknowledge that, and things are not gonna get better until we have that conversation. So I was really offended that that acknowledgement of what that plaque stood for was not mentioned in the minutes. We need to look at ourselves and have a serious conversation about racism. You know, it's, it's a reality, and omitting that description of that plaque is disrespectful to our black community members and especially to those children who had no other choice but to attend school in that building. So I would really like for us to work with the school district and the American Legion to try to have some public acknowledgement of that plaque and why it was placed in that building. You know, it's really, it's really disheartening that we don't want to acknowledge history because if we don't talk about history, we will tend to repeat it. And there's some parts of our history that we want to remain history, so we need to learn from that. And I'm really appreciative that the Legion chose a place to hang that plaque. I appreciate them doing that, but we failed to publicly acknowledge that plaque, and that's something that we need to do. And with that, I will approve the minutes from the Historic District Advisory Commission.
I'll second.
We have a motion in the second to approve item I two. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
New Business. Item eight, New Business. Item eight A, Discussion Approval/Disapproval to Enter Into a Lease Agreement with Brittany Padilla, owner of W. Rose Skin Spa for Suite 201 in the Silver King Marketplace. Ms. Jennifer Evans will be presenting.
Mayor Rankin, members of the council, Suite 201 became available at the beginning of September this year, and Ms. Padilla had approached the town a number of months ago, interested in leasing space once it became available in the Silver King. And so we worked with her for about four months, developing her business plan and so forth. She had an operation over on Butte Avenue, and the W. Rose Skin Spa is, as it sounds, a place where she provides esthetician services for folks in town. And she's interested in moving into the Silver King Marketplace, one because of the foot traffic that's already there in that location. It's a little bit better than where she was on Butte Avenue, and also we think that her business is a good fit for that location. So she's been in business a little more than a year and a half, and she's looking to grow her operation, and we think that she will have a good opportunity in Suite 201. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Member of the council have any question, Jennifer? Need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the lease agreement between the town of Florence and Brittany Padilla, owner of the West Rose Skin Spa for Suite 201 at the Silver King Marketplace.
I'll second.
We have a motion in numerous seconds to approve the, to enter a lease agreement with Brittany Padilla, owner of W. Rose Skin Spa. Any other discussion? And that's it for Suite 201, the Silver King Marketplace. Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B, Resolution Number 1599-16, Discussion Approval/Disapproval of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August 30, 2016. Mayor and members of council, I'm happy to tell you that we did have an election on August 30, 2016, and the number of votes cast in that election by registered voters were, hold on. The number of registered voters we did have on the end of closing date for the voter registration was 4,930. Of those numbers, we received 2,037 ballots cast. There were 70 cent per cent of the ballots that were cast in that election were cast by mail. That means 1,581 ballots were received by mail. There, on the ballot was the vote for the mayor, and the candidates running for mayor were Jim Cox, Tom Rankin, and Tara Walter. Receiving votes, Jim Cox received 483 votes, Tom Rankin received 617 votes, and Tara Walters received 887 votes. Moving on to the general election, will be, on November 8, 2016, will be Tom Rankin and Tara Walter. The results for the election candidates are as follows. Storm Cox received 776 votes. Michelle Durand received 806 votes. Bill Hawkins received 975 votes. Kristen Larson received 964 votes, and Karen Wall received 1,120 votes. That being said, all candidates did receive enough votes to be able to be elected in the primary election. Therefore, underneath the state statutes, rules associated with running elections, the top three members did get elected. So our new council members that will be seated in December are Karen J. Wall, Bill Hawkins, and Kristen Larson. On the election, there was also Proposition 411. Those voting yes for Proposition 411 were 1,320 votes. Those voting no were 567 votes. Proposition 411 does pass, and the town of Florence once again does have home rule for the next four years, starting the next fiscal year. For our primary 2016 election, we did receive 41% voter turnout, and if you compare it to the last mayoral primary election, that is down from 52%. So we did have a lower vote turnout than we are typically in our last election. Does any member of council have any questions?
But we did increase by almost 800 registered voters.
Yes, but we count, that's true, but we count voter turnout. So that is true. With that, if you, your election has been canvassed. All that's left to do is adopt the resolution.
The, does any member of the council have any other questions? Okay, then we need a motion?
I make a motion. We adopt Resolution 1599-16, adopting the 2016 primary election results.
I'll second.
We have a motion in the second. Any other discussion? I've got one thing I'd like to say, and I'd like to thank the voters in the bottom of my heart for passing 411. That shows me that the voters have trust in the council and the way we've been operating and what we've been getting done. So I really appreciate them going to the polls for us. The 40, did you say we had 41% of the vote?
Yes, well, let me go back and look. 41.32% voter turnout.
I guess the thing there I look at is 41% of the people are gonna dictate what 59% of the people, so I would hope that on the, on the general election coming up, that we have everybody, that we can get over the 50%, at least over 50%. With that, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mayor, members of council, staff has asked for item C, Resolution Number 1600-16, to be tabled to the next meeting.
Do we need a motion?
Make a motion to table Resolution Number 1600-16, SLID.
I'll second.
We have a motion in the second to table Resolution 1600-16. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item D, ratification of a contract for the diversion dam road project with Wildan in an amount not to exceed $172,078.50. Mayor and members of council, on October of 2012, staff entered into a contract task order with Wildan Associates for engineering work on the diversion dam road. Recently, we had additional work that needed to be completed, and we're considering a task order to come back to, a change order to come back to council on that contract. Staff did its due diligence to be able to determine whether or not the amount had exceeded the value of the original authorization levels, and what we found was that Wildan did not at that time have an approved contract by council. It was in fact approved by a department head. So at this time, what we've done is we've gone back in and made sure that we have all of our contracts with our task orders that needed to be completed, and we have packaged it to council to make sure that we are approving it in the right way pursuant to Arizona state statutes and town rules and regulations. At this time, what you have is you have a contract that has been looked at by Wildan, and they do agree, and will be signing off on the contract. I did receive notice today at 4:45 that their attorneys did agree with that contract, and they were going to be sending that to us. So what you'll see is the original task order for the amount of $131,061 that was signed off by the then Public Works Director for the work on the roads. You'll see a follow-up agreement in 2016 that was needed for $21,600, and again, a task order, second one that would have been considered a change order for $19,443 for geological services, all needed for that project. As part of putting this together, the amount not to received is now for a fiscal impact of the $172,078. Town of Florence has went in and looked at our system of how we do business and looked at our rules and procedures, and what we found was since 2012, the amount of work that was done on the project was less than $20,000 per year, and that is why it was not found. But due to the fact that we had the change order, we went back and looked. This is not something that's typical that happens. That's why you don't see these things. So what we're asking for now is to make sure that we go back in, ratify a contract with Wildan. We still owe Wildan approximately $41,000 at the time that the contract entered. We will make payment to Wildan. All work associated with the Wildan has been completed at this time. So this project is complete and done.
So what you're asking for is approval of the $172,000?
That's what we're asking for, sir.
Need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ratification of the agreement with Wildan for work completed on the diversion dam road project.
Second. We have a motion in the second to approve the agreement with Wildan for diversion dam road project in amount not to exceed $172,078.50. Correct, Becky?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first off, I'd like to thank everyone for your well wishes and prayers due to my recent medical situation. So I very much appreciate that, and I'm glad that I'm able to be here tonight and not miss a council meeting. Secondarily, I'd like to bring to everybody's attention an article that was in last Tuesday's Casa Grande Dispatch that says "Tax Friendly Florence: A Comfy Home for Retirees. The County Seat Ranks Eight by Analysis by a New York Tech Firm." So if you haven't had a chance to read that article, another honor and certainly something that we should leverage in terms of economic development going forward. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Bill. Second call to the public. Does any member of the public have anything they'd like to say at this time? Ruth, Jim, you're next.
Ruth Harrison of Florence, Arizona. About what council member Woolridge spoke about, would it not be possible to amend the minutes and to include minutes and to include the material that she spoke of in the minutes? I think that might be a good thing to do, and I would like to suggest that that be done. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and honorable council members. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank one of our council members who took the time to go down, up and down Main Street, looking at the streetscape project, but more, and talk to people in the retail business about the project and the possible impact on business. But more importantly, taking the time to document what was learned by that visit up and down Main Street. Thank you, John Anderson.
Thank you.
Does any other member of the council or the public have anything they'd like to say? Seeing no close call to the council, or call to the public, call to the council, John?
Well, I will acknowledge that I did visit Main Street this last week, talk to the businesses, found out what their concerns were about the projects. There were several businesses that expressed that the project had impacted their sales. Several others weren't sure that there was any impact because this is a slow season for Main Street. So it was mixed results. We did have some complaints about the vibrations, jackhammering. Maybe Jess can talk to that. But I was glad to be able to go do that, and I'm very appreciative of how open the businesses were with me. They all were very open and honest about what they felt about the project. Like I say, overall, I think that everyone appreciates what we're trying to do downtown. Sometimes it's just not the way everybody likes to get it done. It took us 10 years to get that project done, and now we're facing with a timeline that we want to get it done because we have parades coming on and a lot of other stuff that's going to happen downtown, the winter visitors are starting to come back. So we need to get this project done, Jess. Thank you.
Becky?
I don't have anything this evening.
Yep.
I'd just like to point out, we had a, Mr. Jerry Robert wrote a letter to the editor Thursday in the paper, and he referred once again to the beautification project, and he accused us of taking out the acorn lights that we didn't. He's claiming that a year ago, Shippo, a man from Shippo, which he says is retired now, but he was, anyway, he was told that, or he claims he was told, that we didn't have to take those out. And it's just like when Bonnie Barriola, about a month and a half ago, she wrote a letter to the editor, about a page and a half, stating that we were, that the town made that decision to take those acorn lights out, and that is totally false. The paper actually came down to, we thought we had it all squared away, and the paper addressed it later, looked through at our records, all the documentation was there. We were doing nothing other than what we had to do if we wanted the grant. So at the point that, if we would have kept the acorn lights, we would have lost the grants. And there was federal money involved, state money involved, and it would have ended up costing us a hundred and some thousand dollars, and we would have had nothing. So, you know, I just want people to know, you know, when you state things publicly as fact, and mostly, you know, it always seems to be this negative stuff, and these falsehoods that get written to the paper. I know everybody doesn't read the paper, but that doesn't help the town grow. It doesn't, it doesn't make us look like an appealing place. You know, people accused, or were, some people accusing the council of not being, and the Town of Florence not being business friendly and not wanting to move forward. And that's the furthest thing from the truth. Everybody works for this town that I know of, works their tail off to do the positive things needed to make it a great community. And everybody on the council works in that direction. And I just wish people would get their facts straight before they start making public statements as fact. And it would sure be, help the community move forward a lot smoother than having all these negative innuendos that are false. I mean, I just, I don't get it, but anyway, that's my thought for the evening.
Okay, Bill. Karen?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Valerie?
I don't have anything.
Karen?
I do. Movie in the Park was very successful. Our staff worked really hard at putting that on. It was a great event. I like that we moved the venue over to this park. It gives more room, more open space to roam around. That also being tied in and said, I noticed some of our leadership's children that were also in attendance. So I would like to thank those that attended. However, we missed Coco in attendance there. If he could give a report to council, also coming up soon, as to what progress he's made, how many meetings he's having, how many kiddos are attending these meetings. At this event, at the Movie in the Park, some of the kiddos needed a little bit of redirection, and our staff stepped in and gave some redirection. We did miss Coco, though, there. In terms of Main Street, Main Street, I've been in communication with Jess and as well with Chris. We do have that parade coming up on October 21st. We talked about that, and Jess had said the project will likely be completed by then. However, I know our businesses are suffering a hardship. I understand the concern of how we can properly barricade them and how they can pose another hazard. However, I think we have some ideas that we're going to talk about tomorrow, so I appreciate you being open to that. And that is all for this evening. Thank you.
Couple things. Want to remind everybody that October the 15th at the Florence Elks Club, there'll be a benefit for a young girl that just graduated from high school last year, Gabby Laura, who is battling throat cancer. It'll be a fundraiser for, at the Elks Club, again, it's October the 15th, starts at 3:00 in the afternoon. Lots of things going on. They are taking donations for, or things to be auctioned off at a live auction. If you have anything, we've got a flyer on bulletin board, I believe. You can get ahold of Stacy or Brandy, the telephone numbers are listed there, so that'd be a great thing. Also, next month, you will see Town Hall purple, and that is for the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Our outside lights will be purple in recognition of all the victims of domestic violence. Police Department, I think you're aware of it, and we're trying to put on some program, I believe, aren't we? One other thing, on Thursday, Councilman Woolridge and I had the pleasure of meeting with Dr. Jacqueline Elliott, the new CAC president. It was sparsely attended, but it was a good meeting. I could, her ideas about the continuation of CAC and how it can benefit our students graduating from high school and those in the eighth grade getting ready to go into high school. I think everything worked. This lady really has a nice sense of direction, I think, with the way the school should be run, and what maybe is changing the curriculum and everything for the students. Again, Valerie, thank you, and congratulations on getting your 12-year permit, or permit, But we want to thank you for the dedication that you have to Florence and its citizens. I knew about the Legion. I don't think a lot of people know about what you were talking about. I think that Oliver out there, you went to school there, didn't you, Oliver? We do have a member of our community that did go to school in the American Legion. He's the one that made me aware of it. And so I think that the minutes, I don't think that they can be amended, but I think that there can be a, maybe a news release or something from the town on stating about that.
Two things. Number one, you could bring that item back at a future meeting and amend the minutes. I was trying to wave everybody down before you voted, but I wasn't successful. But what I would propose is that, as a matter of fact, I've already asked Mark, why don't we come at our next council meeting, if we can work it out with the American Legion, and give a presentation?
Well, yeah, because...
That can be on video.
If it wasn't discussed at the meeting, we don't know if it was discussed at the meeting or not.
True.
So that'd be hard to amend the minutes if they didn't discuss it even at all. And I don't know. I wasn't there. Mark, were you the liaison that was there that night or not?
I'm there. We'll check that.
Check on that, because if it was discussed, then it does need to be put into the minutes. If not, I would...
I'm the liaison to the Historic Advisory Commission, and that was discussed in detail whenever that marker first came up. So I don't know if it was at that meeting or an earlier meeting, but it was very, very interesting. And I was amazed. I had no idea that that had occurred here in Florence, and I thought it was very special that that did occur here. But I know it was discussed in detail.
Well, can we just make a special proclamation?
Yeah.
Well, we could do that, but I'd like to see what the plaque says and if it's been built already. Do you know if it's been put up?
Yes, it has been.
Has been put up. And that's bought by the Historical Society, and that's not purchased out of the town's funds. That's out of the Historical Society. Are the, isn't that correct, Jess?
The Legion.
What's that?
The Legion purchased the plaque, but the Historical Society suggested it, and they are a part of our town. So it doesn't matter who suggested it, but it needs to be acknowledged.
I'm just trying to figure, I agree with you, too. So let's take a look and see how we can correct that, okay? And get the proper wordage on that, verbiage on that. Again, you know, I mentioned Rose Mofford. I don't know how many people actually knew Rose. She was a grand lady. She was the very first female governor of Arizona. She took over when they impeached Governor Meacham. Rose took over. She did not run for reelection. She was Secretary of State when she took over. For those of you that have dined at the LMBN when the Ragas owned it, there was one corner with nothing but Rose Mofford pictures, and then they call it Rose's Corner. It was neat. The last time I saw Rose was at the casino, Wild Horse Pass. And I walked out as we were getting ready to go home, and here's Rose standing out there by herself. And I went up and we talked, and I said, "What are you doing here?" "Well, I'm waiting for my car." And I said, "Okay." I said, "Is somebody going to drive you?" "Oh, no." She says, "I brought a friend." At that time, the friend was 96 years old. Rose was in her late 80s. But here she was, taking care of people, and she taken her out to the casino. That lady wanted to go to the casino, so Rose drove her out there. And here's the ex-governor of Arizona out there, just standing there. And I was surprised that not a lot of people recognized her, because who, if you ever met her, who could forget that beehive? She had the Adidas beehive haircut. So Rose is going to be missed. She grew up in Globe, played ball at ASU, so with that, we need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, second and adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.